Well, we have to have our, open the public hearing, you don't have to do the.
No, I just want to look at your public hearing if you would read the remarks.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Lake Placid will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 6th at 4:45 PM. In person at North Elbert Town Hall, 2693 Main Street, first for Lake Placid, New York, and by video conference to consider the following. Proposed local law number two, 2024, a local law to adopt amendments to the New York State Open Meetings Law. For the expanded use of video conferencing in the Village of Lake Placid. The link for the video conference will be the same for that day's board meeting and available on the village website. Complete copy of these proposed local laws may be found on the village website at HTTPS colon slash slash NorthElba dot Village of Lake Placid dot NY dot gov. Or you may have painted copy by emailing the village clerk at LP clerk at Village of Lake Placid dot NY dot gov. All interested persons are invited to participate in the public hearing and will be given an opportunity to be heard. This local law shall take effect immediately upon the filing of the Secretary of State, sign Anita Anthony Estling, village clerk.
Thank you.
And we apologize for starting late, but technical difficulties.
Sydney, do you have any questions?
I think you'd ask Dan or Bill.
To start with. Um, Phil Beileman, do you have any questions for us on the public hearing?
Anita. Are we clear?
What do you mean?
As far as. Running the meeting from. If you're on vacation, running the meeting from another location.
I believe we are.
Okay.
I believe that Art can do it.
Okay.
As long as it's announced with an address and the public can attend. Um, as far as anyone, any one of you or even Art. Attending a meeting by video conference um to participate legally. You need to, there has to be a extreme.
But that would be non-private.
Non-private.
Right, right.
I mean, what's a private? Wait, what's a private? What's non-private?
If you are on a off-site location.
Right.
And you do not give notice that anybody else from the public can come join you. Because you're somewhat, that you can participate, but you cannot count as a form.
You can't even count as a form if you have been given. Permission to attend virtually, correct? You're not a, you're not a form. If, if I'm in the hospital.
I think in the hospital, if Art gives you permission, you are, because we actually read that it's like.
No, but then you're still on a form, you're not a form.
Oh, no, that, you know, you're not other form and you can vote, you, you can vote.
We don't, I think that's unclear.
Nightcom said you can vote.
Okay.
So it's a form? The form has to be.
Not physically, okay. But you do not count as a quorum.
Okay.
But if Art, for example, is in Florida and we tell people you can go to Florida and be with him. He counts towards a quorum.
Okay.
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah, yes.
Now I'm going to take a play.
Yeah, we're moving our next meeting to Florida.
Well, no, so when she puts out the notice, when Art is in Florida, you have to say remotely. But now you have to give the physical address.
Right, which we know, we've done.
Oh, he's done.
Yes, we always have.
Yeah, we always have.
I guess I never noticed that.
Yeah, because it could be, I mean, nobody has ever taken him up on it, but yeah.
Okay, um, Bill Beileman, did you get your audio going? Do you have any questions for us on the public hearing? Had that problem before too. Around Stan, how about Dan, are you there?
Okay, well, we're not muted, so that's good.
Oh, yeah, I thought your phone's going. I can hear.
Oh, okay, okay.
Thank you very much for that.
I was going to speak.
Got the chat.
Do you have any questions? Sun's out.
About four days.
People's counting, right?
Just.
I guess one follow-up question, so if we knew we were going to be on vacation and said, I want to participate in the board meeting and.
You can all in, but you're not going to count, you're not going to, you can't vote.
What if you posted?
If you posted your address.
Post your address.
Then I would say.
I'm just throwing it to them.
Because it seems like as long as it, as long as it's a virtual location that anyone could legitimately.
That's not the way I'm reading it. It's vacation and delayed travel is not an exception.
No, but you, if you invite the public to your place.
We're not talking about like the extreme circumstance where.
We're talking about arts in Florida.
I, I get it, but, but Mark, I mean, any one of us.
Mark would just have to list where he is and just find us like art.
That's right. My reading is that, is that if you list it as a public location, then that supersedes the vacation.
That's how I understood it.
Yeah.
Can't, so if Mark's in your plane where you're traveling some.
Mark, yeah, about at Potstam and says, I'm at Potstam at 122 State Street. And, and you post that and, and people can come and join him there.
It, it doesn't, that's not the way I read it.
I mean, is that Nightcom's interpretation?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that was my take on it, so. Which I think is reasonable.
That's how it used to be.
Yeah, that it, you know, that it's like it's planned, it's noticed, it's.
I think the only thing there, in my opinion, they really changed was during COVID, they allowed you to have nobody near and have a quorum by.
Correct, that all has gone away and is no longer in effect. So I think it's five of them.
Okay.
Now you can do the, close the public hearing.
Okay, but no one else to. Um, Marcy Thagan, do you have any questions for us on the public forum? With no one else to ask questions, public forum, I hereby close the public forum. Uh, this time we'll start our regular board meeting and Sydney will leave.
I'm literally the supervisor of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, our God, and the principle of justice.
Okay, item A is um, public hearing or regular board meeting, meeting minutes. Um, I believe they all just got sent out to you.
Yes. Sorry, time being.
If, if you want, we can table them until the next meeting, if you're comfortable with what's in there, throw them, I'll leave that to you.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Good, thank you, Anita. Um, and now proposed law, local law number two, 2024. It's always hearing on. Do I have any more questions or do I have a motion to accept?
I made a motion.
No, go forward.
You do.
I'll make the motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, item C, Main Street, recent stop and change order number nine. Do you want to speak at all?
Uh, yeah, um, change your number nine, you know that probably the last page, which is what Ivan sent out, um, just so that we had a total. Um, if you look back at every payment app that was received, there was a less five percent retainage. On every one of them, if you add them all up, it comes to seven hundred and forty-two thousand and fifteen dollars and ninety-one cents. In payment app number seventeen, we've paid five hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty-seven cents of that retainage. Um, which makes due the remaining two hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty-four cents. Um, the additional monies that are listed on there, which is a minimal dollar amount of probably fourteen thousand dollars. Is just the plus and minuses of all the um, other work, so. The sidewalks, we were going to stamp the sidewalks, they quoted us one um price, we didn't stamp the crosswalks, so it decreased the dollar amount that we owed. It's just the true up of everything that was left over and this is the final change order for Main Street.
Can you explain any of these, like, can you help me um, the hybrid relocation?
Right there is the last page, the last page of the full pledge, that's actually change order number eight that was approved.
This one, this whole thing?
That whole thing is change order number eight and any pluses or minuses would have been in this column, there were no adjustments after the fact. So it has a zero net effect. This is a change order that was already previously approved.
So some of the true up is because some of the bid was based on unit pricing.
Yes.
And when it did, when the true up was done. There might have been more units needed.
Mm-hmm.
So that, those were pluses.
Yes, or there may have been less units needed, which were minuses. So the difference between the two makes up, they're fairly balanced.
So the, this page.
Means nothing.
Hi. Yeah, there you go.
And this has been um, audited and, and approved by EFC?
Yes.
And most of it is the distribution of the remaining retainage.
So then what is the total amount that we're paying also that?
Uh, it's the dollar amount that was on the last page.
Oh, the two hundred and forty.
Three hundred and forty-four thousand, that's one dollar and seventy-seven cents. So there was an additional twenty-four thousand dollars of differences, pluses and minuses, um, that make up the remaining.
Mindy, how long before the money we paid out will be reimbursed, have to go back?
We're in the process of getting it renewed. Everything has been approved, the bonds have been approved, um, it's.
Starting to roll out, great.
Great. The bond sale, the bond sale is February 15th.
Mm-hmm.
We won't know the interest rate till then.
Well, that's zero percent, oh, this is zero percent.
Yes. But that frozen scheduled for the fifteenth of February.
Just ten or fifteen minutes of your time to do this. Thank you very much, I know it's a lot of, a lot of work coming to conclusion. Um, did the new software program we put in place where we can carry projects over year to year help?
Um, the budgeting um, capital projects module was extremely helpful in tracking, yes. Um, it made my life a lot easier with grants, that way I could see how much was expended, mine, my board and my room, it's. The main epicenter of all of it, but um, you know, it was extremely helpful.
Good for the year, okay.
And then the, the kind of the, the top sheet page there, um, change order number nine.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's just.
That's every change order.
Every add is, including the, the two hundred, that's below.
Okay.
And that's just for info.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Comments? Do I have a motion to approve? Some moved.
You might want to do this as a um, roll call vote because it is fun, fun and.
Okay.
I'll second.
Um, trustee, yeah, trustee Galen, trustee Brandon.
Aye.
Trustee Quinn.
Aye.
Trustee Kell.
Aye.
And Mayor Dublin.
Aye.
Okay. At this point, we're in the books, onto the next project. So are we closing, finishing up what?
No, ours already closed out. Um, the project itself hasn't been fully completed, but the funding aspect of it. For the next one.
Good stuff. Okay, um, item D, DNC, which I believe is the service agreement of the electric service, can you expand on that?
Uh, it's just our service agreement thing, um, for.
The authority of Northern New York.
Yeah.
So this is um, they have to have us in their system, this is what they are calling dark fiber, it's would be a light vehicle department sort of use. There's not any cost to us of this, but we have to get into their system. And they need um, this agreement with our information in order to do that, and I worked with. The gentleman from Dank and um, Chris, and that. And we had Zoom meetings and went over all of this, so it just needs authorization. For in the Kimball or the mayor to sign and then will be in their system. I think the dark fiber is already in place.
Great.
So it's over here.
Second. All in favor, and the motion, okay, let's have both, one of us sign, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you very much. Um, and you may or may not have heard of Patrick Wells, has applied to tender his resignation at this point. Um, he came here giving us three years and then was going to head to law school. Um, ended up being four, and I'm not sure if he's heading to law school, I haven't heard anything to that regard, but. We thank him very much for his time at the village and wish him well with every size to next. And I guess uh, it's never worked out that we could deny any one of these, but I'll be looking for a, um, a motion to accept his resignation.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I have an app, um, water treatment plant operator position posting, we talked about that in workshop, make the motion to approve, I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
And item D, um, Euro Lake Watership Association funding request.
Right, I'll make a motion.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. And um, item H, proposed development commission appointments.
So the terms that are expiring um, that they would like to continue on are Lori Fitzgerald, Val Rogers and Kathleen Thompson. And they also want to uh, add John Winkler.
And do we have confirmation that Kathleen Thompson is.
I didn't know whether they, they never, they didn't follow up with us.
Okay.
She had some recent surgery, so maybe that's why she was out a little bit.
Yeah, and I think one of the groups clashes with, with the other poetry group that we got, so, you know.
Completely reasonable reason.
We can put her there, I should not.
Yeah, she's on there, yeah.
Um, if I have a motion to approve, second.
I'll make a motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And, and item I is dark sky designation as a standing committee for the proposed appointments. Are they already a standing committee?
They are not.
They're not a formal committee. Okay, so they just want to add a committee, okay.
Yes.
Um, and the committee, as I understand it at this point, would be to look into, from our conversation in the workshops, anyone know that? To look into the idea of whether it's feasible or whether it's something that the village wants and put this into the, into the comprehensive plan.
I think it, it's a little bit more, more advanced than that from what, and, and that was. That was what precipitated my email to think about maybe a, a different way to go, not because I, I certainly understand all the hard work, but. There's going to be even more hard work and I don't want them coming up against brick walls, and I'm just wondering if. If Roost is a better partner. And only because, you know, there, there, I think their biggest challenge is with state agencies. And there are other designations besides community, as I, I looked into it and granted, I wasn't doing a really deep dive. But it certainly, it opened up my eyes, there are parks, there are sanctuaries, there are reserves. I'm just, and it, and they encompass public and private lands, and I'm wondering if that might give them more teeth. When they need to talk to Orta or the, the prisons or whatever when it comes to, yeah. That was just my only suggestion and I, I'm just wondering if we should talk about it more.
My opinion is they put hours and hours and.
I'm sure they did.
And they might come to this conclusion on their own, but they're looking to be empowered to kind of take it to the next level and see what they can do.
Well, would you say they put hours and hours and they're not a committee, why did they do that? And why is it, we didn't ask them to, why?
Because the development commission asked them to.
It was in the last comprehensive.
Okay, but, okay, so this is two parts, I and J, I have no problem with recommending that we put the committee in place. But let's look into it, the second part is saying we're ready, we've looked into it and we know that we want to go for certification. I'm not ready to say that and I don't believe the town is.
Yeah, and I think.
Well, but that's what it is.
All, I put it to a hope too.
Okay, like I said, it will require the town and the village, I'll assume to do that, at this point, the town's just about the same position, at least that I am, I can't speak for you. I mean, we had the presentation and we were told code enforcement had problems with their language and they wanted us to bring it up. It turns out they really don't have a problem with everything they have, they think they have enough here. What they do have in there is one mention to one report to use for a reference and that report's been gone for eight years. So that's the one thing that they could use cleaning up on, that's a technical thing that we could do. Um, like I say, I just, I, I'm not ready, at least I'm not ready, I don't know if you are yet. But I'm not ready to say we're ready to pursue this because I really don't know what it is yet. The one I asked, was it John Winkler? Now it started knowing. Are the Main Street lights considered good or bad? He couldn't answer, and you know, the few times I asked him questions, he couldn't answer. So either he hasn't really looked into it or he didn't know, but I want those answers before I can recommend it.
Yeah, I think this is, it's kind of a tricky, kind of in-between position because. The group, as I understand this on it, um, you know, quite a lot of work looking at the recommendations and specifications. And I think have kind of taken things as far as they can go, like on a, you know, on that, that sort of um. More voluntary basis, they, you know, they worked on like informational leaflets, which I think are, are quite helpful about, you know, movements and all the, all the stuff that he was talking about. And I think we're not, this wouldn't be a, a firm commitment to say, yes, we, we a hundred percent are committing to be a dark sky community. But at the same time, I think that, starting the process, there is a certain kind of momentum and expectation, and I think. From my understanding, you might know more that, you know, there is, to your point, there is work. That comes with that, which the committee seems pretty up for, but they don't want to.
Well, it's worth the money, they, they need money to. To buy materials, to do all the testing and they need the, the, the application fee, I mean, it's not a lot.
Yeah, I was going to say, the, the, I think it's more about the time, you know, I think the money isn't massive from what I understand.
No, it, it's, it's not, and, and if, let me just jump only, in looking at the committee. I don't necessarily think if we should put Kimball in that position, I don't think Kimball should sit on that committee. I think he, he's got a lot of information, absolutely, and I can see him as a resource, but as a village employee being involved. In the committee and attending meetings on a regular basis. He may miss a turn, totally unintentional, maybe make commitments or be asked. I, 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 I just don't think Kimball should be appointed to that committee. A, any village employee with that much. With, with that level of. Well.
Thank you.
Involvement, yeah. Um, another question too is, to me that we've hired an outside firm to commit and hold public hearings to find out what people want. How do we know people want dark sky? Why is this, well, no, why is.
We've heard it plenty of times, with the oval, just if you paid any attention with, with the oval lights of what village residents are.
Well, but, but, but that, but does that cap everybody? I mean, we're back to majority rules, I mean, but is that not something for public hearings? I mean, and we don't control Orta, that's state, so this is what we do, we can have an impact.
What we do, but if this committee can talk to Orta, they might be able to make some progress there.
Yes.
We don't know.
Right, and that.
And we can't do that work, you're not going to go out and do this work, you, and you obviously have no interest in doing it, that's why we have committees.
I think you're putting words in my mouth, I mean, I know we have some problems with Orta and bright this over here. Has anyone taken the time to talk? No, we could. Um, but I, I just don't see where we jumped from the point where we have a dark sky portion of our land code. To saying we definitely want to take this further and, and how many people really do or don't like the oval being bright, we don't know that. Joe, well, you're smiling, have you taken a poll, do you know?
I know, I've heard a lot more people say they don't like it than do.
But the people, the people that don't.
We don't have exact data here, but the only way we can get exact data is if.
Well, but the way it's spelled out is pursue dark sky initiative. I don't get that totally. I don't want you to now move back and.
No, I think John explained that pretty well in the meeting, maybe.
I didn't think so, okay.
Okay, well, then you weren't listening.
I was, he said a bunch of things and there were inconsistencies, I guess I would like to talk to him again to make sure what I'm doing, because I don't want him to come back two months and say, well, you told us we could. When I didn't understand what I told you you could do.
Yeah, and I think, I think this is where it comes in, where, you know, where it's. It, you know, it's a little, it's a little bit of a gray area in terms of what they're asking for, so they're, they are technically asking for permission to explore this. And so I think that that's like a reasonable place to think.
And is that part of the two hundred and fifty dollars?
That is what it is.
So signing up to become one is just exploring if you want to become one?
Yeah, and I think that John's point is that, you know, the, the group has, you know, they're not, they're not entering into this. From a standing start, they've done a lot of work and they kind of have a sense for. What it is, and then the net, you know, the, the questions that you have that I think are tricky to answer. You know, it are things that will become more clear as the engagement process goes on, so. They, you know, I think what is really helpful about that, basically administration fee is that. That taps into the expertise and they have like an event specialist who will come and work with us as part of that process, so.
Let me, let me, in reading, and again, you know, reading is dangerous.
Knowledge.
The criteria, or there are certain criteria that we either have to engage, and one of them is. Changes to land use code. Um, I didn't go through each one, but there are the recommendations of lighting zones, so, you know. To, to Art's point, we don't know exactly what the, what we need to do to become a committee or a community, um. John didn't, and yes, I paid attention, Mark, but it, it still was confusing for me.
Well, and I think a lot of that confusion, he wasn't allowed to give his presentation.
Why is that? He said, he said, we won't give this because you've all heard it, I said, I have heard it.
No, I, I'm going to hold my hand up on that one, I gave him a totally bomb steer that, the last time he gave the presentation, I think that some of the feedback. Was that, you know, isn't this a done deal and, and, you know, we don't need to go through the, the material again. So I said, oh, everybody's happy with the material.
Where did you hear it?
Did we hear it in the development commission meeting? No, well, we heard it in the development commission meeting, but he came to one of the village board meetings previously as well.
Was, or was it a workshop?
It might have been a workshop, I don't.
Yeah, I wasn't either.
Yeah, I thought you were there because I might have.
I remember the presentation, I'm just not clear on your.
So I'm just going to take full responsibility for giving John like a really, really bad steer there because I thought that. I thought that people had seen it and made that comment, so don't, like, I wouldn't put that on him.
Well, so let's, I have a question, so.
Just so for saying, Tupper Lake is. Looking into this more dark scar, guy.
Right.
How about we talk to Tupper Lake and see what has gone on?
Maybe they got to.
And then we can bring it back.
I, I see a big difference between the village and the town, because the village is a concentrated. Section where we have streetlights, we have to have them, we have to have things for safety.
But Tupper Lake has.
The town is a much broader base and. Much of the town is dark except for residential lighting, so it may be different than the town even.
And I think Janet, to be clear, I think what I, what I heard and what I understand about the certification is that. You know, despite the name dark sky, it doesn't mean darkness.
No, no, I recognize.
I think it's important, like, to me, that's a really critical distinction, that it's just, it's about pragmatic solutions to make it. You know, to ma, to make the ambient light going up into the sky less.
Yes, and to be certified, there are certain level criteria that we have to meet, and if we're not. Not, I'm not going to say if we're not willing or if it's not, if it doesn't fit, then they're doing a lot of work.
then they're doing a lot of work for nothing. I think, I think we need to understand a little bit more.
I I get. So so bring, maybe bring John back, have him do the presentation. But again, I'm gonna hold my hand on that one.
I think it's a development commission meeting.
Yeah.
I think so, because I don't remember the workshop or board meeting.
Yeah, okay. Because I thought I remembered the feedback afterwards, but that's okay. Well, um, but in any case, I'll I'll definitely take that one, and then he can have a chance to maybe share that. And I wonder if there's maybe an opportunity to, like, you know, if we know our our like particular hit list of concerns, which as I understand, is our security lighting, you know, kind of festive lighting, and and, you know, maybe, you know, how to tackle some of the order things. Are those kind of the main things that you can think of?
There there's other things, but hmm, maybe we should bring an order representative here and say, look, we're looking into this, and and you've got to be a willing partner. You know, you've got to understand. I don't know if if the committee has reached out, do you know?
He said he didn't, because he doesn't feel like he's in our business.
But neither are we. Well, you mean, now that once he's a committee, he could, yes.
Right, but maybe before, maybe, I mean, before we jump into this, we bring somebody in from order, which would probably be Bob Hammond. I'm gonna just guess it would be Bob Manning, Hammond, or Emma Lamy, who is sustainability.
Yeah.
Um, bring her in and say, look, you know, the the town and the village are asked to support this ongoing effort, but you're a big player in this.
Well, the town should be part of that too.
Okay.
So we, so we say, like, the sequence, we approve the committee, empower them to exist, and therefore reach out with some status, and then.
Which we've always had a dark sky committee, right? That's what George Jones was on. I mean, it was always part of the.
It was part, but it it wasn't as formalized. Nobody really took ownership of it until. Yeah, well, that was only what affected her vision on the lake.
Okay.
But I think it, I think it's got, uh, like a a s- a structure and and organization, and, you know, I mean, they're really driving a lot of.
And maybe bring Roostin too. Because if this is, you know, from from the Bob run to the prisons, and it's a twenty miles radius, it's a, it's a bigger project than just the community.
I'm jumping ahead on this, but let's say we do decide to to have this meeting, do we have as a joint meeting with the town?
Yes.
Okay, so they have all players at table, we can not wonder what one's going to do, what the others are going to do.
I mean, I'm taking it seriously. I think it's very valuable, but I just want to know more.
Yeah, and it's see, it's, I mean, from my understanding, you know, like, I think that it seems like in places that are built up, there's this pragmatic lens. And like, there's some places that are like, you know, proper urban areas that have this designation, and they clearly, you know, have plenty of lighting around, so.
If you're making a list on, if I'm not mistaken, in the little bit I read, it said that if this designation goes forward, within five years, everyone would have to retrofit their lights.
That was.
I mean, that, I mean, I can see if somebody sells a house, or a grandfather runs something like that, but that's, that would be a tough sell, I would think, to the public. But that would be a good question to ask, because I'm not clear on that. Does anyone else have any other questions?
I know the biggest part is, you know, it's a order, because I see it every day when I get up and I walk early in the morning. I see our town, which people are like, oh, it's, you know, it's when I look out this way, you wouldn't believe it, at six o'clock in the morning, oh, it looks like sometimes.
They shouldn't, they should go west.
Especially if it's overcast.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I'm not up at eleven.
I'm not up at eleven either.
Right, but those are, those are. Yeah.
But that's, the shift is done at eleven, so that's why they they turn them on. But the Bob run stays on all night, because they have three shifts.
That's, and then, and the ski jumps one day, they can bright smell.
Then another question, I guess I would ask, is we have a dark sky commission. We do have to have down lighting. Obviously.
On the lanes, but right.
Yes, obviously, they want something more. I guess having that explained a little bit would be good too, because I really have a lot of questions. And unfortunately, I didn't. Unfortunately, someone stopped an hesitation. But neither had anyone I asked either, but now we have to give the committee a chance to ask those questions.
Yeah, that sounds helpful, because I think, I think, you know, my sense is that, you know, they're, they obviously are interested in the subject, and have done a lot of work, but also, I think, you know, want to perceive with, if they do, with kind of, you know, a collaborative approach and backing. They don't want to get too far out in front of anything.
Gave a big interview on NPR.
And I guess I have a question, because the way it's written, but if I says dark style designation is a standard. Where? In the comprehensive plan or the development commission? Okay, because we do already have, at least we always did, I don't, we still do.
It's part, yeah, it is part of that. And I think it's just that the development commission, I understand it, has responsibility for helping execute the plan. And this is, they, like, to your point, they've had some people, like, interested in working on it. But now this is a way, and I think in part because they've had, you know, so much great participation and and movement that they they want to formalize it, because they're, they're one of the more productive groups.
There's any, I can't see any problem with having the committee.
No.
And we can, we can pass that part.
Yeah.
And then we can have our joint hearing and find out answers to our questions. And then we can make the decision on where we want to go from there. Does that sound? Does that sound clear?
Do we want the committee as stated, minus Kimball, because you guys had concerns about that?
I was the only one. I don't know how anybody else feels.
Well, and at this point, Kimball with his help shouldn't be on. And I'm not trying to say, but.
Well, and he probably should also be an advisor. I mean, anytime they give him.
Yes.
Anytime they did any of our village deployments, they can.
Yeah, advisory role, so.
And I think he, I think that he has found it helpful to be linked with them, from talking to him, like, it's, you know, like, it's you know, it's helped kind of reinforce and do some of the research that they're looking to do there anyway, in terms of.
At least it's a committee he can go to.
Yeah.
So they can go with him.
Yeah.
So, um, I guess the motion would be to approve the dark sky standing committee minus Kimball.
You would make the appointment of those name, those people named with the exception Kimball. And then if there'd be a vote on on your appointment, you make the appointment. Your votes.
We know.
You want me to read the names?
Yes, here.
Denise Aaronstone, Debbie Aaronstone, Holly Aaronstone, Lori Fitzgerald, Sarah Galvin, Georgia Jones, Lou Rupia, Rosalie Rupia, Chris Newcomb, Southern West, John Winkler, and Laura Yurkovich.
Okay, so I make the appointment, um, for the slate of officers for the dark skies.
Slate of members.
Slate of members to the dark sky committee.
Then there's a motion to approve the appointment.
I'm gonna motion that we approve the appointment at the, for the members of the committee that the mayor has presented.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Mark, you might want to abstain.
I guess I can abstain.
No, I vote I in this place.
Okay.
Okay, and so then, do we, we would probably have a motion table, I and Jay, yes.
I made a motion, so we can vote, vote. Jay, until.
Public hearing.
Public, is it a public hearing?
Or is it though, there's a joint meeting?
Joint. Which has to be.
Doesn't have to be a public?
If we're meeting.
No, just be a public meeting.
A meeting, yeah, right, okay.
Would not be public input, it would be.
Right.
I'm second with with the order.
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And I'll vote I as well. Okay, anything else to come from the clerks?
Nope, that's all.
I have a, under treasury is warrant affidavit number thirteen. Thank you very much. Um, do I have a motion to accept warrants?
Make the motion.
Second, all in favor? Anything else to come from the treasury?
Uh, yes. Um, just a couple last minute things. We discussed this during a workshop, um, it was the changes to the senior water sewer rate application. We did, um, increase the overall, um, house assessment from three hundred thousand to four hundred thousand, just due to assess values at this point. Um, and the change in how these total income is calculated, or yes, household income is calculated.
So what's that, now, so it's a salary, right?
Yeah.
So that's senior.
Yes. Dan, three overs of Q five, and.
Okay, so there's, it's. It's gone two ways to benefit. One, household income is now doesn't include social security.
Mm-hmm.
And your assessed value was higher, higher, so.
May or may not. For mirroring the exemption for, the same as that, that just goes back to, what do we do with? Which we still have to work on disabled. Mm-hmm. Which is in, we're in process.
Right, we're working on.
Right, so it's like one category where it's senior disabled veterans.
So it's just the changes to the application. I just need them approved to be formed.
Is it in mind?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm the motion to approve the changes as you decided.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I as well.
Um, and under that same token, we have two people who are currently on the exemptions. Um, they need all of the income requirements. Uh, however, their home value, and we've done this in the past, one is forty nine thousand dollars over, one is thirty six thousand dollars over. Um, they've been long time people on the senior water sewer rate. Yes, um, but it's whether or not you want to grant it.
Sure, I'm large.
Yes.
Is there, wait a minute, is there a provision in our existing exemption to oral variance? Or waiver?
Yes, we've done it.
Based on what?
Um, or hits?
I think it's, I think it's a slippery slope.
Yes, here's a question, Gloria, I mean.
How much is too much, is the question?
I mean, should we just not make the the amount for a hundred fifty thousand?
Yeah, and well, we had this conversation.
But though, so is there a house?
Are they widows? Are they widowers? Are they single, or?
It shouldn't, but, okay, but you've got bright lines standing.
I know, well, that's what I'm asking, well.
Are you looking, maybe you've already done?
Yes, I mean. This this particular person has been on it, because certainly they'll figure out some kind. Um, she's been on it forever.
And then the only thing that happened was that the assessment of ours went up.
Yeah.
So that's.
So, so the thing is, they probably never bought their assessment.
Yeah.
So. So it's a slippery, but the thing is, there probably isn't one thirty nine thousand dollars more, it should be at four hundred. And the same thing was the forty six, if they would have thought it, because right now, as we're noticing in town, once you got rid of the D O D O's and that, houses have started joining now. You know, just saying. Right?
I mean, just. Um. But that's everyone, that's everyone has stated their case, and Janet pointed out, um, I guess.
I I I don't think we have a bright line criteria for granting a variance or a, or a waiver. I think it should be established one, probably, but I don't know how you would.
Yeah, you're right.
What, 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 what are you gonna say?
Well, except for the fact that the only thing that's changed is that their assessments went up. We didn't have any.
But their assessments could have been low all these years.
But we don't have anything to do with that.
No.
But their assessments.
Oh, we set the limit.
We set the limit, yeah. So either you're under it or you're not. So that's one of, I I don't know, I think it's a slippery slope.
And how much?
How much? How much, how, how much is too much? You've got a, have a fifteen thousand dollar difference between the two of them.
Mm-hmm.
So. And what's the difference between?
Doesn't matter.
No, the water rate.
Doesn't matter. They're they're, they're either in or they're out.
Yeah.
Right, I just. This is just me speaking.
Wow.
You're just wondering how much of a rate it is to get to senior rates.
I'm just sitting there and for dear life, I've always said we can do, take care of our young and our elderly. And their elderly, that you need to serve help.
Ones in the town.
They're both in the town.
I've always said, and I, and you, you know, this is.
Um, all right, so one of the things that we've always said too is if we don't have it on the agenda, you have to in time think or research it. So this is something we can hold off, talk about the next workshop and.
Yep. That we, they will, until the.
Well, it's not on the agenda, so we don't have to.
Okay, so, Adida, you will obviously already put that there. Good job, thank you. Anything else?
Nope, I'm done. Did they even ask for? Um, they do every year, yeah. They just re, we have their returns updated.
Um, okay, anything under new business? And under old business?
I think just a reminder that the, um, the community certainties are held. For, and so that you can keep.
This weekend, it would be winter carnival, uh, pond hockey.
Well, if you want to know.
Winter carnival, we have pond hockey, we have sea jumping, and probably something else.
Oh, uh, C H E, and C H E's got, hmm, let's see, pond hockey has ninety five teams. They're probably gonna play on the lake on Friday, but Saturday and Sunday, they'll be on the oval, depending upon.
But tho- those are small teams, right? They're only four people.
Six, six, but there's ninety five of them. Um, this is C H E's, one of C H E's biggest hockey tournaments, and there's fifty two teams, I think. So they're in the Olympic Center. Ski jump ticket sales aren't what they were last year, but they're still pretty good. Um.
They were half what they were last year, they'd be good.
Yeah, no, no, they're, I mean, they're pleased, but, um, the the Polish ski jumpers haven't been performing well. So I think we're missing that community. Um, and then, yeah, as you said, winter carnival.
So I just want to be aware of this is gonna be.
Always is.
But it's usually the coldest weekend of the year, not the.
They'll be in yours.
Okay, with that nice winter report. Um, okay, so, anything else under old business?
You expect me to help with that?
I gave it to you once.
I can't, no, you've got a new iPad too.
I'll go for one.
I'm your fault.
I, oh, let's see, oh, I can help you with that. And you've got a watch. Oh, you've got a pen.
And you know why I got a pen?
No.
Because I said, they said, well, what do you want? I said, I want best camera.
Because you have to post Harvey and Ruben at five thirty in the morning on the avenue.
Okay, under mayor items, um, our annual meeting is coming up, actually April first. April fools, that's gonna be an interesting meeting. And, uh, one day.
No.
And, um, we always look over our policies and procedures as, um, liaisons to the different departments. You might just check with them. Keep in mind, a lot of the things you just look at and say, this doesn't make any sense. A lot of it is state mandated, but go from there. Every year, we end up with that. But. Um, and I did just attend, and I, um, it was very good, very helpful as usual. I've got some notes, I'll try and get them together, bring it to you. Okay, um, commissioner reports?
Well, yeah, just the police that Chuck's with me, and it's hoping that the one wants to come, it was coming back, and the other one.
Qualifies.
Qualified, and he's doing it, so I love you.
Everything's pretty quiet, um, from what I know, but I think then, um, we were just saying, the, um, maybe on the noise ordinance, we're gonna try to get, get that to. noise ordinance, we're gonna try to get, get that to, um, workshop next week.
Good, okay, well, we had last weekend, or last time, we had randomly, so, I think you're not keeping it still seven.
Yeah, but I think, um, uh, Chuck is planning to come, and Darcy's gonna try to come as well.
Perfect, good. Anything else, commissioner, please?
Public comments?
Okay. Okay, um, this is for the motion adjourned, motion adjourned, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so it usually does rain, I'm not gonna get your key now.
Yeah. I think I'll go here, it's been really
Go to white, and so, no, I can't find the way to see